There. Okay, first thing I'm gonna do is make a motion to open the combined work session and business meeting of the village board for July. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an ambitious agenda tonight, but a lot of it is just resolution related, which should go fairly quickly because we've discussed this, these matters in previous work sessions, but I thought it was important to um to open tonight a little differently and to kind of address what happened Saturday night. So Saturday, I was down at the Jersey Shore with my family for my wife's and my anniversary. And at six twelve P M. in Butler, Pennsylvania, we all know what happened. Um, a gunman on a roof um at a campaign rally for a presidential candidate and former president um took eight shots. Blessedly missed the former president, other than grazing his ear, but three other people were struck. One person was killed, a fifty year old man who's a fire career firefighter who was shielding his two daughters when the rounds cracked and um protected them with his body, two others, both of which are vacillating between critical and 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 serious condition. Um, I think it's, I think it's important to say that um, you know, i- 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 when these things happen, it's a, it's a business that I spent a big part of my life in. You know, either executive protection or crisis incident response, tactical operations and things like that. And the last couple of days, I've been doing a lot of writing and 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 discussing this as a, as a talking head and talking about the X's and O's about it. But I think it's also important, I was very encouraged last night, see the president making a, an Oval Office address and talk about the fact that in our country, I think that the rhetoric, the heated rhetoric, the overwrought hyperbole and some of the stuff that happens during campaigns, especially national campaigns, just has to be toned down. Um, and and I think I was encouraged to hear that um um, the former president is is rewriting his speech um and for delivery, I think on Thursday night at the, at the R and C. Having said that, on this village board, we don't run on on partisan lines, but everybody knows which party we hew to or what are, you know, how we see things. And it's, it's very encouraging and I think it's, I'm appreciative of the, of the, of the four colleagues I work with up here that are seated at the dais up here, that though we can have rigorous and vigorous debates, um, it never goes to that point. And I get it, we're not debating um foreign policy. We're not debating abortion, we're not debating the Second Amendment, we're not debating border security. We're worried about public safety, uh leaking water pipes, sidewalks, um, things like that. But we can have differences in debates and we can do it without, you know, being disagreeable and without raising the temperature um to a level where an unhinged person like this twenty year old kid, um, and I say this as a, as a former FBI sniper and as a um, a graduate of the United States Marine Corps Scout Sniper School. Um, the fact that, you know, this person missed their mark and it's, it's, you've got to subdue your elation that the president, former president was, was not mortally struck, but another man was, but the fact that from a hundred and thirty yards away and eight shots being fired, um, that the assassin missed his intended mark. Um, turning down the, the um, the heated rhetoric, and I think it's this, and I heard this a long time ago and I won't take credit for this, I like to take credit for quotes sometimes if people don't know who said it before. But in this instance, I don't know who the original author was, but there's a saying that says it's impossible to hate up close. You go onto social media, you, you, you read things online and it's so easy from the distance and the insulation and the insularity of sitting in your basement or with your laptop on your lap and typing things out about the other side. Um, the things that you hear right now in the national campaigns or even at the state level. Um, you know, I have a, I'm blessed to have a grandfather that, that fought in World War Two. He's fought actual fascists. We don't have anybody as a fascist running. I've also had a grandfather who fought in nineteen fifty one in Korea against the People's Republic of China um and the folks that they sent over the border who are actual communists. We don't have any communists that are major party members or running any of these tickets. And I think that sometimes that hyperbole um and the things that we say um really can have deleterious effects, which we saw this week. And obviously, as we ramp up the campaign seasons, um, we're blessed that in the village, our elections are in March, they don't align with the November elections. But just something to keep in mind and and keep, keep the, keep the former president in your prayers, keep the current president in your prayers. And uh, and obviously say a prayer tonight also for um, for the gentleman who was killed doing, you know, what a, what a father would do in shielding his two young kids. That's just what I wanted to say about that. Okay, um, moving on tonight, the first thing I think we need to do is I need to make a motion to approve the minutes from the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four village board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item of business is the treasures report.
Public comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got, I got ahead of myself here. Public comment, there, for those of you that have not partaken in public comment at our board meetings, um, we allow public comment at the beginning of meetings. Um, and then we also have them at the end, so you can speak about anything you want. We don't restrict it to agenda items. At the beginning of the meeting, you'll have three minutes to speak, you'll step up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then you feel free to address the board. And then at the end of the meeting as well, in case you want to see how something develops through the agenda, um, there'll be an opportunity to speak then too. So first off, anybody wish to address the board? Seeing no one, I will move on then to the treasures report number eight. All right, for June, the reconciliation of monthly bank statements resulted in the monthly water reports showing um, the village numbers at three hundred and twenty-seven thousand ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. In the town, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-six cents for a total of seven hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Warrant number six, including all prepaid, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. The monthly revenue expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenues stand at three million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-six cents with expenditures of two million ninety thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. The water fund revenues, one million six hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents with expenditures of one million six thousand eighty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. And sewer funds revenues are one hundred and ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars and fourteen cents with expenditures of four, excuse me, forty-four thousand two dollars and twenty-six cents. This brings total receipts to five million four hundred and seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents or sixty-three point one three six three percent in our anticipated revenues and three million one hundred and forty-eight thousand eleven dollars and nineteen cents or thirty-six point two six nine seven percent in anticipated expenditures through the month of June. The balance collected for sewer capital stands at six hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents through June, with total taxes collected through June twenty-fourth of two million nine hundred and nine thousand twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, also some notes, um, ongoing training is taking place between um, Megan Gishwin, who is our deputy village clerk, but also helping out in the treasurer's office, and Springbook, Brooke, and then night class interest where the board voted to move eight hundred thousand dollars worth of our authorized, unallocated fund balance for the village. Um, as of July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the interest stands at eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents. That's great, our money is working for us. And what's on the budget amendment, budget line transfer? Oh, that's in, that's coming up. Okay, I just want to make one note before I forget. Um, in mentioning sewer funds revenues, I spoke to the town supervisor today, just like we have done and are currently ongoing in discussing water rates and discussing water sales and things like that with the town, because that obviously affects town um residents, um as well as village residents. Um, the supervisor, myself, will have a preliminary meeting on sewer um before we set to have, hopefully in August or maybe at the latest in September, a meeting at the town where the village board will travel up there and we will sit together with our colleagues on the town council and discuss how the sewer works. The difference is, is that the village owns all the water infrastructure and sets the rates. The town owns the sewage treatment plant and the infrastructure within town limits, but the village owns the infrastructure within the village limit. So we're gonna look at that because the last um, the last intermunicipal agreement we had with the town was executed nineteen sixty-seven. I was two years old and did not sign on to that, but we will give that a hardy review and um, we're gonna get it started next week, just the supervisor and myself. Okay, that is that regarding the treasures report. Next item is the building department. And for the building department, who's got that, is that you, Dave?
Yes.
Trustee Carnwright.
Okay, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department, report for June twenty twenty-four. Buildings permits issued fourteen, certificate of compliance occupancy issued eight, onsite inspections twenty-three, violations four, stop work orders zero, municipal searches one, solar panels zero and fire inspections one. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer. Thank you, Manny.
Senor Carmona, anything to add? All right, I know one of the things that we were looking at doing this summer is um making certain that we took a look around the village and some of the properties that might be in violation in regard to fences and length of front lawns and things like that. Where do we stand on that? Is, are things moving along in regards to that? We're first warning people, knocking on their door, talking to them? And then if they remain out of compliance, then we're issuing them a violation, correct?
Right, that's exactly what we're doing. I got G B Moore doing that, he's going door to door, exactly, and trying to educate the general public and what is required for them to maintain their property. And uh, they go, most people comply.
Okay, excellent. The, the few um residents that we are engaged in court proceedings with, uh, we've, we've, we filed the notices and we're proceeding along as appropriate and as according to the law, correct?
Yes, we're working close to where the legal department, uh, and it's working well. We got the uh, the program for the summonses to where we need it to be. So now it's just a matter of process and then.
Excellent, okay. Any trustees with questions for the building inspector?
Just put the row number on, how many uh households are we talking about that we're citing? How many?
Siting or taking to court? There's a difference, I mean, citing is a normal process, to court is very rare.
Ready to go to court, we got about fourteen.
Property maintenance.
Uh, fire safety.
It's a court fees.
Okay.
Better to comply. Uh, but unfortunately, the town is very busy, so we only get two days a month. Uh, it's tough to move it along, but uh.
It's in the town court.
And, and, and just because I've worked closely with the code enforcement officer on this matter for the last three years, this isn't us seeing a violation and taking somebody to court. In many instances, these are violations that have predated my tenure as mayor and I've been here for three months, I'm sorry, three years and three months. So um, these are, these are going back, I mean, these are the definition of scofflaws. And we, we certainly try to resolve it with, with people um amicably um without going through the court process. But unfortunately, we do have some, as you pointed out, fire safety code issues that we can't turn a blind eye to. Any other questions for the building inspector? All right, moving on to the next, fire department, trustee Paleota.
Uh, June twenty twenty-four, department report, two structure fires, three, sorry, three EMS calls, uh, one carbon monoxide condition, five false alarms, three motor vehicle accidents, canceled en route one, apparatus station maintenance one, drills five, work details one, meetings two, training one, recruitment one. Total volunteer hours, two hundred and ninety-one point seven five, total events twenty-six. Congratulations to firefighter Wade Noll- Noller on completing his national certification for firefighter one. The search for an engine four twelve replacement continues. To date, we have looked at four potential replacements in Walden, Bullville and Mount Joy, Pennsylvania.
Chief, what was the trip that you and the assistant chief took recently? Where did, where did you go? I know it was further than Walden or. Where?
Margus, Borges, Borg in the world.
Uh, it was uh, Mount Joy, Pennsylvania.
It was Mount Joy, Pennsylvania, okay. All right, um, chief, anything to add?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Sean, what were the two structure fires?
Uh, those were both utility calls, one to Cornwall and one to the city of Newburgh.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Any injuries or casualties or?
Nope.
Excellent, all right, thank you. Moving on, um, so chief Dixon is still away as his son just took his vows with his newly betrothed. So um, he was married and uh, have a lifetime of happiness and joy and we will. Why, why is everybody smiling and giggling?
Same day as you, wasn't it?
Well, yes.
I hope not.
Yeah, well, um, anyway, Sergeant, Sergeant Ruger is here in his uh stead to answer any questions and take the heat from the board. So Sergeant, we're glad you're here. Trustee Brain is going to handle the report for the police department.
Uh, the Cornwall on Hudson Police Department Monthly Report, June first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-four. There were three hundred and seventy-two total calls for service, there were no felony calls. Uh, misdemeanors and violations, there was one for fraud, three criminal mischief, one pedate larceny and two hack, harassment or aggravated harassment. It was one felony arrest and one arrest warrant, uh, one, one warrant arrest, sorry, so two arrests. Uh, vehicle and traffic calls and postings and events, there was uh, seven property damage accidents, eight traffic summonses issued, two traffic warnings issued, two parking summonses issued, ten traffic enforcement posts and two speed or radar sign postings. Noncriminal activity, there were seven fire response calls, two domestic incidents, seven alarm response calls, one noise complaint, four suspicious incident calls, five animal complaints and one disorderly person call. And departmental assists, the department assisted the town of Cornwall P D seven times, EMS six, other agencies once, other police agencies once, they performed two welfare checks and one citizen's assist. Uh, during the month of June twenty-four, Cornwall on Hudson P D applied for approximately uh, one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents in grant funding from PERMA, Public Employer Risk Management Association Incorporated for the purchase of two bulletproof vests and outer carriers for C O H P D officers. Uh, the department requests formal C O H village board resolution to transfer five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars from the C O H Police Department Grant Line A three zero nine zero to the Police Department Expense Line A three one two zero dot four. These are for A E D units grants, this is a grant we received and want to put it toward that. Transfer four hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents from the C O H Police Department Grant Line A three nut zero nine zero to the Police Department Expense Line A three one two zero, the PERMA Bulletproof Vest Grant. Uh, the department chief also requests formal C O H village board resolution approval to purchase one twenty twenty-three Dodge Durango S U V police vehicle with installed emergency equipment for approximately fifty-four thousand dollars. The total cost of the vehicle and equipment will be reimbursed to the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, New York through an approved New York State Crest Grant Funding, which was applied for by C O H P D last November twenty twenty-three. Uh, and a further request for a formal C O H village board resolution to transfer approximately fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars from the C O H Police Grant Line A three zero nine zero to the Police Expense Line A three one two zero. This funding is the result of a New York State Tech Grant that C O H P D applied for earlier this year. The funding will be utilized to purchase this card scan computerized fingerprinting system for the department. Respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Um, does it make sense, Doris, for us just to do the resolutions related to the police department now?
Yeah.
Okay, I think it is, um, first of all, I think it is a credit to Chief Dixon and his department. Um, a lot of these things that were just described with a lot of big numbers on them are budget neutral for us because the chief finds
Really?
grant mechanisms out there to cover them. Now, we have had an unfortunate run of luck with our vehicles, or bad luck, I should say, in that across the last month, um, our officers while on duty um have struck two deer, one on nine W and one on Shore Road. Um, one of the um deer strikes um resulted in totaling the vehicle. Both officers are, are okay, um, but usually when a airbag is deployed um and much damage to the grill and the front end, um, they get, they get totaled. So um, you know, we didn't, we didn't have money budgeted to, to buy a brand new vehicle. The chief was able to secure a grant that's gonna cover a vehicle um in full, which is, which is outstanding. So um, why don't we do this right now? I'm gonna go ahead and in regards to what trustee Brain just read, in order, I'm gonna make a motion to transfer five thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars from the C O H Police Department Grant Line Alpha three zero nine zero to the Police Department Expense Line Alpha three one two zero point four for the A E D grant and transfer four hundred and seven dollars and seventy cents from the C O H P D Grant Line Alpha three zero nine zero to the Police Department Expense Line Alpha three one two zero um in regards to the PERMA Bulletproof Vest Grant. And may I get a second?
Second.
Um, Sergeant Ruger, anything to add on that? We're just happy it's happening. Absolutely, all right, any further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, the police department vehicle purchase. I'd like to make the following motion. Whereas the dormitory authority of the state of New York, hereafter referred to as DASNY, has created its Crest Program, making monetary grants available to municipalities and other organizations. And whereas the chief of police, in an effort to offset the costs of running the police department and to conserve the village's fiscal resources and to reduce the tax burden on village residents, submitted a grant application seeking assistance for the purchase of a brand new police vehicle. And whereas during the time that the grant application was pending, at least one additional police department vehicle had to be taken off patrol for repair, making the village's need to obtain the grant more urgent. And whereas on or about July first, two thousand and twenty-four, the village was informed that it had been awarded a Crest Grant in the sum of fifty-four thousand dollars and received a grant disbursement agreement from DASNY, which was executed by the mayor. And whereas the chief of police has requested the village board authorize a purchase of one two thousand and twenty-three Dodge Durango S U V police vehicle with necessary emergency equipment at a cost of fifty-four thousand dollars even, with the cost to be covered by the DASNY Crest Grant. Now therefore, be hereby resolved that the village board hereby authorize, ratifies and approves the actions taken by the chief of police and the mayor in applying for obtaining and executing the DASNY Grant Disbursement Agreement. And be it further resolved, the village board authorized the purchase of one two thousand and twenty-three Dodge Durango S U V police vehicle with necessary emergency equipment at a cost of fifty-four thousand dollars, with the cost to be covered by said DASNY Crest Grant. May I have a second?
Second.
Sergeant Ruger, anything to add? Further discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and last but not least, the police department scanner purchase. I'd like to make a motion to transfer fourteen thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars from the Cornwall and Hudson Police Grant Line Alpha three zero nine zero to the Police Expense Line Alpha three one two zero. This is from a New York State Law Enforcement Tech Grant. The Cornwall and Hudson Police Department applied for, which funding will be utilized for the purchase of a card scan fingerprinting system for the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department, request resolution to purchase upon transfer. May I have a second?
Second.
Sergeant, anything to add? Are we still rolling ink prints?
We, well, this is actually still gonna be an ink print system. So LiveScan is digital fingerprints, where this card scan, uh, what is it, twelve thousand, fifteen thousand?
Fourteen, seven, nine, zero.
So almost fifteen. So you actually still do the ink and then you, you scan them into what's called the card scan. The web-based system, very similar to LiveScan, but having it here allows us to not have to piggyback off the town, making this more efficient, but the LiveScan system, I wanna say, you can't quote me, but it's like triple the price um to have them digitally done. So it's the way the town is using it as well with this card scan device.
Yeah.
So you, after you ink them and you scan them, whatever software they have actually creates the fingerprint off.
Twenty-four years ago.
The ink washes off.
Nowadays, it does, did back in the day.
Yeah, it's not easy. Twenty-four years ago, in the summer of two thousand, the FBI's New York City office went to LiveScan. That's how long that they have not been rolling ink prints. But you're suggesting that it's three times the amount of this one right here. Okay, something we should look at and wonder if there's any other grants available out there that is, as we move forward, we look to do that to get out of the ink business.
I think one of the issues with getting it, Mr. Mayor, is the volume of arrests. Um, kinda correlates into the application of the grant.
Fair.
And when
Good point.
big people look at the dollars.
Yeah, yeah, fair point. All right, did uh, we had any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna backtrack now and we just did the police department. So the next one is Department of Public Works, trustee Carnwright.
Okay, Village of Cornwall and Hudson, Department of Public Works for June twenty twenty-four. Trash collected for the month. I don't have that, but I'm sure we collected a lot.
Tons.
Tons. Probably thirty tons. Recycling collected for the month, thirteen point eight tons. Yard waste collected for the month, a hundred yards. Electronic uh items recycled, um, fifty pounds. Repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles continues. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties has resumed. Sweeping the streets, blacktop patching. Uh, the kennel at the farm was rightfully removed. Um, I assume we put it in a dumpster. And road and driveway at the farm have been chipped and sealed and they look great. Notes, new caseload er, eight twenty-one G has been delivered and it is in service. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
I just wanna, I wanna thank the uh.
Oh, and they did the art today.
Yeah, I'm gonna, and I'll get to that. I want to thank the D P W superintendent uh for helping out for the July fourth parade and providing a driver and a vehicle to help tow a float. And to Dave's point, um, today, um, the town highway department, along with our village D P W, worked closely with local artist Vivian Collins to install five total or six?
I think there's seven.
Six altogether.
Six altogether, yeah.
There's one more to go.
Yeah, so there's two in the town, but one by the duck pond, one by the library. They changed the one that is on Bridge Street, the one on Bridge Street went to the firehouse. And then we have one down at the traffic triangle where uh Bayview intersects Dock Hill Road and Hudson Street. And the last one, which is the one I showed up to watch the install and it didn't go well. I don't know if I was the, if I was the black cloud on that one, but there was some damage to the structure. But luckily, uh, we know a guy and um, I guess it's that quality auto body right now having a, the aircraft aluminum welds being redone. But um, really well done. Um, the plan to do this was originally to pour concrete pads. Um, and then the highway superintendent and the D P W superintendent came up with the idea to use highway plates, um, which could be painted black and had welded onto them um a chain to keep people off of them. And then once the exhibit is over and if we elect not to put art there next time or do something different, those plates will be put back into service for the highway department. They'll be used to be placed on roads when there's construction work being done or holes or things like that. So I just happened to show up next door because the sixth one, I just described the other five. The sixth one was going in at Walden Bank, um, which will be Walden's, um, it'll be Walden's responsibility, but we did agree to do the install and during the install, um, one of the welds came undone, so it's gotta be replaced. And Dave, we expect that to go in tomorrow?
I, I think so.
Okay.
It should.
All right, and you wonder yourself, if you haven't been following along too closely here with the other three people watching online right now, um, I think it's three, it might have ticked up to four.
Yeah.
Maybe five. Um, the, what we're trying to do with these, with these sculptures that, that are on loan to us by the artist Vivian Collins is this Thursday, there's a um Cornwall Chamber of Commerce kickoff cocktail party at Bridge Street where they'll do some art unveiling. On Friday, the Art and Cuminy Walk, again sponsored by the Cornwall, uh, the Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce, will take place on Main Street and Hudson Street and involve food trucks, music and kids activities. This Saturday, a self-guided tour, art throughout Cornwall, kids' activities and pop-up performers. This Sunday, July twenty-first, picnic with the arts, food trucks um for picnics and music in the park at the town at six P M. And if I'm doing that, I'm gonna give a gratuitous shout out to the bandstand for the village because tomorrow night at six thirty, we'll have performers at the bandstand every Tuesday night until the last, the last Tuesday in September. So that's just a shout out, um, and a little shilling for the Cornwall Chamber of Commerce and kind of explains why we had this art installed around. And art is, is like beauty, it's in the eye of the beholder. So our goal is to do this for a year and then next year, if somebody else comes along and has a different idea or different art that they would like to loan to the village um and the town, we will take that under advisement. It would certainly be done through the Greater, the Chamber of Commerce and we would consider it then. But this is just us trying to wrap into what the Storm King uh Art Center has been doing for years here and make this a place for people to come and look at art. Yes, sir?
Um, I'd just add that the exhibition of these sculptures also uh gets us on the calendar for the upstate art weekend, which is a, a statewide, well, not statewide, but an upstate, uh, it, it's a larger marketing. Yeah, it's, well, I think it's just, I think it's just the Hudson Valley, right?
No, this, this, no, it's the Eastern Seaboard.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
So it's marketed all over the place to get art enthusiasts to come to the places that are exhibiting public art. So we are now one of them and so we might expect to see a few people who come to visit to look at the pieces and shop at our local businesses.
And if you, if you notice in front of painters, it looks like the owners put out a couple of pieces of art as well. I think people are getting excited about, you know, trying to bring a little, a little art to our uh, to our central business district, which is the idea. Okay, um, Dave, anything to add from uh Public Works?
Well, on the report, there, the reason why there's no tonnage is the county is a little behind on sending out there. And I think it came in after I provided the report. So I haven't got the numbers updated yet.
Okay. And what are your guys, what do you? And what are your guys, what are you attending tomorrow, Dave? Just because I know I've forgotten. You told me this morning.
Tomorrow, myself, uh, and four of my employees, or I shouldn't say my employees, our employees are going to be attending the, uh. Orange County Highway Superintendent's fundraiser for Hudson Valley Honor Flight. At the town of Walkill, uh, Town Highway Department's going as well and Mike has a, uh. A few guys from his department, they're gonna be attending it also.
Excellent.
All the proceeds go to Hudson Valley Honor Flight. Over the last, I think, five years, we've given them, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from this outing that we put on.
Excellent. For those that don't know what the honor flight is, it's an opportunity for veterans. I mean, look, we're, we're losing, uh, World War Two veterans. Um, just exponentially as they're, as they're aging out and, and most of them are approaching a hundred. But World War Two veterans, um, I don't think we have any living World War One veterans. Um, Korean conflict veterans, Vietnam veterans, um, Persian Gulf War veterans. I don't know if they've actually gone down yet to, um, Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom, but it's a way to thank veterans. The flight leaves out of Stewart. It goes down for the day, down to Washington, down to the monuments down there and, um, the, the veterans get a tour and they get treated. Like the first class folks that they are. So that's the purpose of it. And Dave, thank you to the highway superintendent's folks for putting that on.
We have several, uh, highway superintendents that are actually, uh, sh- uh, what do they call guardians?
Right.
Travel with them and, uh, go to the monuments. They give up their time to do that.
Excellent. All right, anything else to add, Dave?
No, that is it.
All right, Water Department, Trustee Brain.
Uh, the Water Department for Cornwall and Hudson, June twenty twenty four monthly report. Monthly production was twenty six million, one hundred seventeen thousand gallons, so the daily average is eight hundred and seventy one thousand gallons. Sampling, we collected twenty four samples under our approved water quality monitoring plan. Treatment, routine operations and maintenance, uh, they repaired the Black Rock Water Treatment Plant's PRVs. Which I will ask about in a moment. Transmission and distribution, ninety six utility mark outs were completed. Fire hydrants were repaired at Brook, Brook Hollow Drive and Poplar Street. Water service shut offs or turn ons at owners' requests were performed at Three Grandview Avenue, fifteen Perry Road, twenty one Firth Street, twenty six Duncan and twenty Woodview Place. Curt boxes were repaired at twenty five twenty five Route nine W and twenty six Firth Street. Leaks were repaired by the property owner at one twenty five Duncan Avenue and one oh nine Jessica Court. And, uh, the department assisted NEMA with fire flow test of campus fire hydrants. Meters, they read the commercial meters, the department read the town and village residential meters. Fourteen final water meter readings were completed, six residential water meters were replaced. Two meter transmitters were replaced, four miscellaneous jobs were completed and seventeen water line inspections were completed. Property maintenance, there was routine weekly property mowing, uh, they completed the mowing of the dams. They installed erosion blankets along Pex Road, repaired irrigation water supply line at the village firehouse. Other tasks, staff attended and completed annual PBSH Pesh training and continuing education for licensed water treatment operators. New landscape equipment trailer was delivered and the staff provided a public education booth at the annual River Fest Festival. Sincerely, Michael P. Trainer, Senior Water Superintendent.
Michael, anything to add?
Um, no, not, not for June, but I just wanna note that the new billing format, um, and schedule went into effect today. The, the new bills were all mailed out today to all town and village residents. They're due on August fifteenth. Um, we do have a resolution on the, on the agenda concerning them a little bit later.
And I just wondered what the RV stood for?
Pressure regulating valve.
Mike, uh, is the, um, your, um, program completely done?
Not completely. Uh, well. In art and for us it is, there's about forty seven meters in homes that have not been changed out. Um, we've attempted to get them changed out. They're now being charged the, the, uh, the seventy five dollars because we have to actually go out manually read them. Um, we hope to do another round of letters in the coming months to try and stir that up again.
So these are people who voluntarily don't wanna be on the program?
Correct. A couple of them are vacant. They've been demolished and the water's turned off. They're not getting charged the, the seventy five dollars because it's a known issue. They're not refusing. They just don't. They're rebuilding the homes. Um, but all in all about, I think it was about one percent to two percent of the population of the residents did not comply.
And Mike, uh, appreciate his, uh, his searching, um, for as many possible grant opportunities. Now we're, we're on the I U P list, Mike, is that what it's called?
Yes, but we're not on it for the grant opportunity that's coming up later tonight.
Not that one.
Correct.
Got it. All right, and I recently spoke with, um, Congressman Ryan and he is seeking opportunities potentially in next year's budget. Um, for us to have one of our water projects, uh, which we already did the one up in the town. Um, or it's, it's, we're, we're gonna be doing it up in the town. We have the funding for it. But maybe a, a funded project within village limits, um, in the next budget. So keep, keep your ears open for that because we're hoping to be announcing that once the. Once all the earmarks in the budget is announced. Okay, um, trustees, any other questions for the Water Superintendent?
Just, I was just want, um, the timetable on the, uh, the Maple Street project.
Um, we sent the application and design out to the Health Department for comments and approval. We've gotten their first round of comments back, um, and we've replied to them. So they're just waiting for their final approvals. Um, we hope to go out and bid by the end of the summer, early fall. Um, we got some other projects going on as well that we may wanna couple together with that, that project so that we can get a good, uh. Good selection of bids.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, moving on, uh, New Windsor Cornwall EMS Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, the report for May, to begin with personnel, one new part time paramedic. There were two new volunteers. No staff injuries or issues. As for operational, there were four hundred and ninety six. Total dispatches, one hundred percent of the calls were covered and that is now over two hundred, two thousand and three hundred calls for the year. There were three hundred and twenty four patients transported and the chief notes that's a record. Two hundred and sixty New Windsor nine one one calls, sixty eight Cornwall nine one one and seven Village of Cornwall and Hudson nine one one calls. The average response times were six minutes, four seconds for New Windsor, five minutes, ten seconds for Cornwall and six minutes, six seconds for Cornwall and Hudson. The Cornwall unit covered eleven calls in New Windsor. New Windsor covered ten calls in the Cornwall, in Cornwall and in the village. The new fly car was sent for lights and emergency equipment. The cyanide kit was purchased for treating burn patients at fifteen hundred dollars per dose. Um, Mike and Charlie, I never realized that cyanide kits were used for treating. Did you guys know about that? I mean, I looked it up. It said actually.
Cyanide kits.
Cyanide kits, but it's.
Not cyanide.
No, yeah, but it goes to cyanide kits. But when you look it up, it's cyanide. It's for cyanide poisoning, but also. But also treats smoke from home and industrial fires.
Wild.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
No, I just looked it up. Before I got in here, I'd never heard of that.
It's gonna be a Jeopardy question one night.
Yeah. So the grant from and with respect to administrative and other, the grant from Assemblyman, Assemblyman Ikus. For one hundred thousand dollars for ALS training was approved. The new ambulance for New Windsor slated for November, an additional, an additional order, yet will take two years to arrive. Floors, the floors were completed at the Cornwall station. They covered Highland's EMS for six days as their ambulance is all broke, added a crew which they paid for. Um, Newburgh EMS was approved for ALS and this will decrease mutual aid revenue. Uh, Chief Mike Biggs.
I, I still, I still marvel at how professionally run the operations are at the New Windsor Station. Um, as well as what we see now at the Cornwall EMS station at one Clinton Street. Um, we've had this arrangement, this deal with New Windsor EMS since July first of two thousand and twenty two. We just entered into our third year of a three year agreement. Um, they still have not missed one call, um, which is an incredible track record. Um, the town supervisor and myself will be meeting with Chief Big next week. I think it's either Tuesday or Wednesday to begin negotiations. On the next three year contract. So, um, we need to be prepared to, to look forward because we have one year left on the deal. And I wanna make sure that we get a agreement framed out, um, before we get too dangerously close to July first. All right, thank you. Any, uh.
What are we starting out with them? You're talking about in regards to New Windsor, excuse me, New Windsor EMS?
So the deal runs out July first, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay.
So we have, we have less than one year.
Yeah.
Okay, um. What is the next thing? Uh, next, okay, next item is appointment of full time Water Department Administrator. I'm gonna make the following motion. This is in, in regards to our employee who has been with us now for, Mike, how long? Two years?
Uh, two and a half.
Two and a half years, um, in a part time capacity and is now going to, um, be, um. Promoted to a full time position, um, handling all water billing and end of month reconciliations, which is a, which is a rather daunting job. So. Um, we budgeted for this a year ago, so it is already in the budget, although it'll just be beginning this coming Monday, which is today? It's today. So it begins today. All right, so July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. All right, Mike, make the following motion. Whereas the Village of Cornwall and Hudson is currently in need of a full time Water Department Administrative Assistant. And whereas Stephanie Zagarras, the village's current part time Water Department Secretary has expressed interest in the position. And whereas the Water Superintendent and the village board have determined that Stephanie Zagarras is well qualified for the position of Water Department Administrative Assistant. Now therefore be it hereby resolved, the village board hereby appoint Stephanie Zagarras to the position of Water Department Administrative Assistant. To be compensated at the rate of twenty seven dollars per hour. And that such appointment is subject to the longest term of probation permitted by the Orange County Rules for the Classified Service. Michael, is that eighteen months?
No, it's, it's up to fif- it's a minimum of eighteen weeks up to a maximum of fifty two weeks, I believe.
They recently changed it.
That's right, because the police, we could make it for eighteen months. C S E A was a year or less. So the, the maximum allowable is fifty two weeks, which is a year. So we will make it a. Probationary period of one year. Um, by the Orange County Rules for the Classified Service and be it further resolved, this appointment shall take effect on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four. May I have a second? Further discussion from the board? Sir?
Mr. Mayor, the Orange County recently modified the rules for the classified service. I'm not sure that it's correct that it would be a fifty two week probationary period.
So we're just gonna leave it at the longest possible.
Whatever their current.
Who will be checking on that? I have an action item. Who's, who's going to check on that and let me know? So that we can let the, the appointee know. Okay, all right.
I'll, I'll check.
Not that, I would expect her to act differently on day X plus one. However, I would like to know what that term is. So as we go forward, we know what to.
Typically, when you get changed positions from one job title to another, the max is six months. But considering she's going from part time to full time, it may be the full fifty two weeks.
Can, can the three of you, just one of you let me know what that is? Thank you. All right, um, did we vote on that yet? No, we didn't. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the Cornwall, the Central High School Cheerleading Car Wash Fundraiser. So this is always something that we allow the cheerleaders to do. They use the Village Hall Parking Lot on a Saturday or a Sunday. They have a fundraiser, they wash cars, um, and that helps to phrase some of the cost of their travel to, um, their cheerleading competitions and offset. Costs for other things. So I'd like to make a motion to approve two car wash fundraisers for the Cornwall Central High School Cheerleading Booster Club. On July twentieth, twenty twenty four. Can somebody tell me what day that is? Is that a Saturday? It's a Saturday? And I'm assuming August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four is also a Saturday. In the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, three two five street office parking lot. I'm assuming that they begin in the morning. That's usually when I've seen them there. We should probably give them some hours though next time. Where does it say? Oh, okay, on there. I got it. Okay, nine to three. Perfect. All right, may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, Cornwall Presbyterian Church Service at the Riverfront. Gonna make a motion to approve a church service for Cornwall Presbyterian Church on September ninth, two thousand and twenty four at Donahue Park. I'm pretty confident September ninth is a Sunday.
I see the twenty second on the form I'm looking at.
Yes, September is the ninth month of the year. You're right, though. It's twenty second.
So it's nine twenty, it's nine twenty two, twenty twenty four, which again is a Sunday. At Donahue Park, um, they typically use the shelter, what's commonly known as the gazebo, which is on the north end of the park. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, after much back and forth and tinkering and input and tweaking and all the things. And I'd especially like to give a shout out to Trustee Brain for taking on the biggest portion of that, as well as the, the village clerk, Doris Wickizer, who. Um, came up with, uh, an idea to do this and to streamline what was a lengthy, um, application. That we were able to streamline and make much more user friendly. So, um, the board has looked at it and is okay with it. And so I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event, um, application.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Trustee Brain has created a form, which is excellent. However, some of the text that's in the form differs from what we approved, my office approved previously. So we need to take the, the text that we approved and incorporate it into Bill's form. Now. I know this has been kicking around for a while. If you want to authorize me to, to work with. Trustee Brain, just to get the correct language in his application form, we can do that. Unless the board wants to look at it again, that it's up to them. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I know.
I just need a product. I just need the product. Okay, so the board is going to, I'm gonna make a motion.
Approve it subject to final changes.
Perfect. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special event application, subject to review by council and Trustee Brain. Um, and as soon as possible after July fifteenth, which is today's date, two thousand and twenty four. Um, da, da, da. All right, and the, the current version, which is attached to these minutes, but shall be updated to the approved version. Once we have it. But I have people literally waiting in line to, to schedule, um, you know, rentals of these facilities. So. We have to get this done this week.
Right, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't do this again, except that it is some of the indemnification language.
That's important.
And the insurance language. So, so that's why we have to get it right.
Okay, further discussion? Did I get a second already?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on, the W Q I P grant application for the Spagnum Dam, Spagnum Pond Dam. So of the five. Reservoirs that we have, the Spagnum Pond from the top is number two down. All of them are located at Black Rock. Um, they are, Mike, what, permitted for about four hundred thousand gallons per day?
Correct.
If necessary, but we've been able to not need them.
Correct.
Um, we've been lucky that the last four summers have been relatively wet, which has kept them at. Levels that we haven't worried, had to worry about evaporation or things like that. Um, so. This grant, Mike, you wanna give a quick update on this and just remind the board of what this involves?
Sure, so the grant is being administered as the Water Quality Improvement Program is administered through the DEC. Last year, the, uh, DEC allowed applications to rehabilitate intermediate hazard dams, which the Spagnum Dam is. Um, our engineers took a look at the grant application. They feel as though, um, they can make a good case to, to get some funding through the DEC. To rehabilitate the, the dam. Um, this program is not as competitive as a lot of the infrastructure programs are. Um, in the terms of means testing. Um, we're on the same level play, same level playing field as with our neighboring communities. Um, so they feel it's worth a shot going after this. Currently, they estimate about two million dollars to rehabilitate that dam, so that's what we'll be putting in for. There is, I believe it's a twenty five percent match. Um, but I think that, I think we would all agree that that's well worth it, um, considering the work that has to be done up there.
So it's a twenty five percent match. If we were to get it, so if my math is correct, that's five hundred thousand. So it's a twenty five percent match, if we were to get it, so if my math is correct, that's five hundred thousand.
Correct.
To do that, um as Mike pointed out, we are blessed and sometimes cursed with being a community of some means. Um we don't fall into the environment, environmental justice zone, so we're not eligible, people saying, why aren't you getting more grants for this or that? Um in many instances, we're either ineligible for them, or we are at the very bottom tier of eligibility, meaning that we're just not gonna be in line to get it. As Mike pointed out, um when we did a water system review, we had our engineers conduct that, um that dam um will require two million dollars worth of remediation for it. And that is our most glaring issue up in the reservoir, up in the reservoirs, the five reservoirs we have, so. Um all right, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve Pentagarin Deutsch Consulting Engineers P C to prepare a New York State D E C, that's the Department of Environmental Conservation. Grant to rehab the Spagnum Pond Dam. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, next item of business is the bid acceptance for the sale of the Ford three fifty, F three fifty, right Dave? Okay, Dave, anything you wanna add on this before I just read the very bland and anodyne resolution?
Been here a very long time. It's thirty, it's a thirty two year old pickup truck that the village got uh.
We got its money's worth out of it.
Very good use out of it, started out as the uh brush truck for the uh fire department. And then was transferred over and we turned it into a mechanic's vehicle and we used it up until uh we just got the new one in, so.
Excellent, all right, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid from R P C Electric for three thousand eight hundred dollars U S. For the sale of a nineteen ninety two Ford F three fifty pickup with nineteen thousand, boy, talk about low miles for a vehicle that old, cuz it's just knocking around the village. Nineteen thousand six hundred fifteen miles, VIN one, F is in Foxtrot, T is in Tango, H is in Hotel, F is in Foxtrot three six, M is in Mike, six, N is in November, N is in November, A is in Alpha, six two two two, one. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions of the D P W Superintendent? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, next item of business, you should have an interoffice memo in here for a budget line transfer for the D P W for paving. Um Dave, you wanna make, you wanna give a quick background on this before I read the motion?
Uh yes, the uh, the transfer you're gonna make is funds that we received from Central Hudson for their work that they did on Maple Road. When they were installing new gas mains at the end of last year. Uh they uh agreed to mill and pave the road, so those funds are, that's just for Maple Road. We also received some funds for other roads, but we haven't gotten to that yet, we're still working through.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to move funds from line Alpha five one one zero point four three zero to Alpha five one one zero point four zero zero. In the amount of eighty two thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars for the repaving and black dock repairs to Maple Road. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions or discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item of business is an authorization for the water superintendent and superintendent of Public Works to adjust late fees incurred for certain outstanding utility bills. Who wants to take this one? Michael, you, you clearly were a volunteer.
Yes, I'm told, um so as I mentioned earlier, we are switching our utility billing system, not the system, but the schedule and the, the format. We're going away from the uh postcards to a full size statement, they were mailed out today. We switched the billing schedule um by, we, we, we're going into the odd months for all town and village bills. The reason for this is so that all six billing cycles during the course of a fiscal year, the due dates will be within the same fiscal year, rather than having them lag over into the new fiscal year. Um I had spoken with Treasurer Paula Howard about that, and she's thought that would be a good idea. Um having done that, typically the village bills, the last village bill under the old system was mailed out June fifteenth. Um they were due today, but the new bill for the village went out today, which is due August fifteenth. Uh we sent out notices to everybody, I could see that there could, there may be some confusion getting back to back bills like that. And the people not having a, a clear understanding of when they're due, um so we're asking that the, the village board waive certain um penalty fees. I, I forget exactly what the uh resolution states, but for a defined period of time during that overlap period.
It says for July and August.
Okay.
What's that, Judge?
It says for July and August.
Yes, all right, uh let me go ahead and read the resolution, if there's anything to add to it, any caveats, let me know. Um I'm gonna make the motion to um approve the following, whereas the village of Cornwall and Hudson, hereafter referred to as the village, is in the process of implementing a new billing system for users. Of its water, sewer and refuge services, and whereas the village issued utility bills in July fifteenth to two thousand and twenty four, today's date, with a due date of August fifteenth two thousand and twenty four. And whereas the July fifteen two thousand and twenty twenty four billing cycle overlaps the former billing cycle under the old billing schedule. And whereas any penalties incurred for past due payments on July fifteen two thousand and twenty four, billing will commence on August fifteenth two thousand and twenty four. And whereas residents will continue to be responsible for paying any late fees incurred for bills issued with a due date before June thirtieth two thousand and twenty four, under the former billing system, boy, this is complicated. And whereas the village board wishes to avoid residents paying duplicative or unnecessary late fees due to overlapping and or multiple billings necessitated by the implementation of the village's new billing schedule. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the village board hereby authorizes the water superintendent and highway superintendent to review and approve a waiver of any incorrect or duplicative late fees incurred by utility users in June and July. As a result of the implementation of the new billing system. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion or anything to add? Michael, anything to add? David, anything to add? Board, any questions about why we're doing this?
Don't complicate it.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, that does it for resolutions, and we're moving on to other business. Um some of the things on other business are.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I think council sent us a resolution related to the uh grant that the police department received, fifty four thousand. We moved the budget line, but I think we had to accept the grant, is that right?
We did.
We did.
We did.
We did.
Yep, yep. Moving on to other business, um I'm sure everyone is aware that in the town, they passed a tree law that was drafted by the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council. Um I had brought said tree law to the village board, asked them to consider it, each of the trustees has taken a look at it, we've given it to council to have council take a look at it. There were some minor tweaks that council had made, the board is still mulling this over, we want to get this right. Why would we do anything different from the, the town? Um there are some, there are some differences between the village and the town where it applies, but this tree law, people hear that and they think, oh my gosh, the Gestapo are gonna show up on my front lawn and tell me I can't take down a, a nuisance bush next to my driveway. That's not what the tree law is intended to do, um when the, when the board gets this tweaked, and I know that the deputy mayor and council had a conversation about it today. We will make it available online, so people can take a look at it, it's nothing to fear, that the town has theirs on their um website now, where you can take a look at it there. And again, ours wouldn't be much different than that, it's basically um aimed at development. And obviously in the town, there's more development available and ongoing and opportunities than there are in the village, where we have bigger green spaces. Um and requirements for land parcels and how you can develop on them. Joe, anything you wanted to add to that?
This afternoon, I circulated our draft, we had been working with the town's draft until now, so I, I modified it. Uh so now it is in our format, I added a few definitions that came either from places in the state code or other places in our code. To, I believe, clarify, because it is, it is very jargon heavy, procedure heavy, it's good, it's good, I'm not criticizing, it's just, it's, it's difficult, it's difficult to follow. So I added a few definitions that I, I think would, would help applicants coming to the planning board. And again, the discussion that we had previously and what I had recommended was because it's the planning board that's going to have the authority here. And because I also think we probably need some input as this goes forward from the building department. I had recommended that when this board's comfortable, that we distribute it to the planning board and, and to our code enforcement officer for their comments. And, and every, everyone on the board's comments, so as you say, uh we can have everybody's points heard and, and put them in the local law.
Okay, I, I'm in no rush, I, I'd like to target September, um which obviously we have a combined uh work session and business meeting again in August. We collapsed the two together into one, so we don't have two meetings in July and August. Um so I'd really like to get that done by September, if that's possible, and I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I mean.
Giving board members an opportunity to read it and digest it.
Yeah, you have it now, you have it now, so you know, whenever the board wants to give me their comments, deputy mayor give me his comments, I'll make the final changes.
Okay.
In other words, I don't think we need to wait until another meeting, if the board gives me your comments, I'll, I'll incorporate it.
You could do this in August.
Well, I'm not trying to rush it, all I'm saying is at this point, get me your comments.
There being something.
Correct, some, so.
Which I don't anticipate.
I, I don't anticipate.
This was fleshed out pretty.
We still have to do the notice, so we can't do it and.
That's true too.
Oh, well, no, no.
You're saying to set a public hearing.
I'm just trying to finish the process, right, right.
Got it, okay, all right, anything else to add on tree law?
Well, Joe didn't, Joe just tweaked language, the structure is the same.
You didn't do anything, what he's saying is substantively, you didn't say.
Well, I, I tried, you know, I did.
I'm just saying.
No, it's substantially the same, Dave, yes, that's correct, that's correct.
There was some errors in the language that you felt should be corrected.
Clarify, I don't think there were any, I don't think there were any errors, but I, I, I added, I added some things.
And just to be clear, as I said this before, this is that, it specifically exempts single and two family residences.
It does, and I, and I, and I went back and I looked at that to make sure, and, and they are, one, single and, and two family residences are excluded from the law.
Even if their property contained a pitch or an incline that ran into somebody else's property along the same pitch incline, and they wanted to do clear cutting on said property.
Inclines are spoken to.
Right, but I'm saying, what if it is a single family or two family that's on a piece of property that's on an incline where you're concerned about erosion? Uh is there any impact from what your tweaks are to said law?
No, it's, it's, I, well, one, one goal was to keep it similar to the town, right? So people can understand what they're supposed to do, right? We can't have two completely different laws, so, so this law does specifically exempt out single and two family residences, period, now.
As did the town.
As did the town.
Okay.
Now, there may be, there may be other regulations in our code about steep slopes and what you can do or can't do. But for this tree preservation law.
It doesn't impact.
They are exempt, correct.
That's what I needed to know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the biggest concern Mrs. McGillicuddy has, is that you're gonna come to my property and tell me what I can do on it regarding trees and bushes and stuff.
There's kind of an open issue, because this is essentially gonna go to every application that goes to the planning board. Single family homes, two family homes are exempt. The law provides that for, this must be complied with for subdivisions.
Right.
So you could have a situation where we have a single or two family home that tries to subdivide. The way it's written now, it says those applications are exempt. It would have to be something other than a single or two family home.
Okay.
So.
All right, all right, thank you, thank you for the work on that, and thank you for the conversation with him today, trying to help us get across the finish line on that. Okay, next item of business is term limits, length of trustee terms and salaries, so I don't know if you follow along um town business. But I'm enough of a womp to, to, to do that, especially as it pertains to things in the village. But the town had gone through recently looking at potential term limits and extending terms for the supervisor's office, the clerk's office, and the receiver of taxes. Um I, I've talked about this with the board before, I don't think I'm inclined right now with so much else on our plate, we had looked at possible term limits. I don't think it necessarily impacts us as much, the idea for, for term limits is that sometimes people, you know, uh, you know, get onto a board or get into a position and they just stay in that position forever. There's no fresh ideas, there's no, you know, the, the enthusiasm wanes, those kind of things, and I guess that's the purpose behind that. Some people would argue that elections are term limits, that's what they are, that's why we have elections. And I think in a village where you have a much smaller um pool of talent, because you've got three thousand residents versus the town having thirteen thousand residents. Um sometimes it may be hard to fill positions, because um it's, it's hard to get people to, 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 to take that responsibility on, if they've got kids they're raising, or if they got jobs that make it prohibitive or things like that. So um any trustees see it differently, that we table the term limit issue? It, the term limit issue was passed by the town to go on a ballot as part of a ballot initiative. I don't know if it's gonna make it by November, I think that's what they're trying to do, I think it passed three to two, that it be placed on a ballot initiative, so the town did vote to do that. We could certainly do that as well.
Do you know what the limit was?
There is no limit right now, they just said.
No, I know, but did, what did they propose?
Yes, if, if they were four year terms, it would be twelve years, so three terms, and if they were two year terms, it would be six terms of two.
It's a pretty generous.
I, I was just gonna say, it's not chasing anybody away after a, a term or two. Uh and, and I see it both ways, I just, I'm not married to one thing or the other on it, I see the argument both ways, and if anybody had a strong feeling about it, and said we need to make it a ballot initiative, I'm happy to entertain it, I just don't see the necessity right now. Anybody see it differently? Okay, all right, moving on, next item, this is something that I think is important, in the town, there are two, there's a two year term for the supervisor, which I agree with, I think the top, the, the chief executive should have a shorter term than other board members. But the council members in the town serve four year terms, so it's two and four. In the village, it's two and two, and I think that causes trustees to constantly be running, um there is a learning curve here, and I think a four year term, you could argue maybe a three year term. Um would be beneficial um to the board and to the village itself, so I'll throw that out there and say that I would be willing to, we would have to obviously put this up for a vote. There is a mayoral election in March, that's typically when more people turn out in the village to vote. We typically have between nine hundred and a thousand voters, we have twenty one hundred registered voters in the village, so almost fifty percent of the populace that is eligible to vote turns, I'm sorry, that is registered to vote, turns out to vote. On off years, when we just have trustees on the ballot or unopposed elections, sometimes we have as few as a hundred people show up to vote. So I would argue that if we want a ballot initiative and you wanna get the biggest turnout, it's possible, March would be the time to do this. What are your thoughts on extending trustee terms to either three or four years? And if you ask me what other villages do, there's fifteen hundred municipalities across New York State, five hundred and sixty two of them are villages, and every single one of them is different. Some of them are three and three, some of them are two and four, some of them are two and two, some of them are four and four, some of them are three and four, so there's no rhyme or reason, it's just what a particular municipality wants. And with that, I'll open the floor.
Just a quick question, this, um in regards to, if we put this on the ballot, Joe, it would not be then effective until when? Neck, not twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six?
I'm, I, I haven't been too much involved in it yet, but, but normally if you're gonna change a term. It, it starts, it starts after, it's so that it doesn't affect people's current terms.
On the current board, you would have to run, and that would be part of the language of the law, correct, as you, as you established the term?
Yeah, because I'm.
Say that no one that voted for this is now going to extend their tenure, you have to go through another election.
Right, and then one thing that I think the board should consider, in the timing, when you're ultimately going to adopt this, when you're getting items on the ballot for a referendum. You not only have to work it so that you adopt the law in time, so that you effectuate what you're trying to do, there's also printing requirements from the county.
Right.
So you have to let the commissioner.
Yes.
Electors or whatever. Of electors or whatever the title is. So you have to build in some lead time because you have to frame out the, the text of the referendum, and they have to print it and approve it. So.
Elections commissioner.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So we know that the town is, get ready, buckle up, Lori Beth. So we know that the town is currently ongoing this because they just passed the resolution to allow them to go forward the ballot initiative. I'm gonna assign you to work with the village clerk and our council, and it shouldn't be a hard deal, but obviously go through NICOM with this because the village clerk has reached out to NICOM for specifics on it, and to be my point person, my POC on this. So we want to get this on the ballot in March that basically asks our constituency, should village trustee terms be increased from two years to four years? Are we in agreement it should be four, not three? Are we comfortable with that?
I, yeah, the odd number makes my.
Head explode? All right.
I do wanna confirm one thing. I'm very much in favor of it being a ballot initiative, but I wanna confirm, that is required, right?
Yes, yes, it does. Yes. Yes. Term limits and extending, and extending terms.
Right.
Have to be ballot initiatives.
Mandatory, right.
All right. Got it. Okay. And then lastly, salaries. I think one of the things, and I say this as someone who has nine months and 15 days left in office, and I'm starting to get wistful about it. I do think that it is very difficult to get people to run in a village that has, you know, per capita. We are, it's an expensive place to live, not per capita, but it's expensive place to live, to encourage people to run for these positions, particularly the, the chief executive position, if they're not someone like me that's old and retired. And I think if we want fresh blood and we want younger people and we want a bigger talent pool to draw from, I don't think that a modest salary increase is going to have people coming out in droves. But at the current rates, which are public, you know, I think, you know, the salaries can all be accessed. But I think a modest increase for the mayor's office, which I would propose in next year's budget, as well as the trustees in next year's budget, so it would be after the next election, is in order. And I would argue that doing it, if you use the mayor's salary as a, as the fulcrum here, which is $20,000, to increase it by half. So you would increase it to $30,000 and then do the same percentage for the trustees, which make between $6,000 and $8,000 because a portion of that is also their position or their stipend as being on the water committee. And do the same thing and increase that by half. I think that is, is fair and righteous. And again, is that going to, you know, open up the aperture and bring a slew of people in here? I'm finally able to run now because they increased the salary by X amount? No, but I also think it's very difficult in a place like this where it's hard to afford to live here and you're trying to get younger people and, and new people to get involved in, in, in this amazing business. And it truly is an amazing business of, of serving the community on the opportunity to do that. So I'm gonna look to do that probably and discuss that and, and put that out. We don't need to make that a ballot initiative. I think we would do that by resolution. The resolution would be the budget. So I would do it transparently. I will talk about it from the dais. I will probably do a mayor's message on it on social media, so nobody goes, oh, my gosh, in the dark of night, look what they just did. And propose that this would go into effect in next year's budget, so after the next, after the next election.
And just in background, I've been on the board the longest, and, and I think the mayor's salary when I began in 2010 was around 18. And the trustees, we were like five or six. So it's not, it's not a huge.
And, and, and the funny thing is, so Mayor Moulton, may rest in peace, who was the village mayor from 1981 until 2007, for 26 years. And obviously passed away a little over a year ago. But when I would, when I went to go see him in 2021, he was in his house and he wasn't really going out much anymore. And Alzheimer had taken away a lot of his memory, but there were still things he was sharp on. And he asked me what my salary was out of the blue one morning. And I told him, and he says, well, that's $2,000 more than I made. You're overpaid. But that goes to show, you know, the amount, the difference from somebody that was in office in the 80s, the 90s, and the 2000s, and the fact that there isn't an adjustment. Again, nobody appears crying poverty. Everybody's fighting inflation now. Everyone's dealing with the cost of living. Everyone's dealing with putting their kids through school. Everyone's dealing with the taxes here. And we're trying to hold the line on it, and I think this board and previous administrations have done a good job of holding the line and not raising taxes as best as possible. You still want the same services, but obviously the cost of things go up every single year. And we have to figure out a way to do it because we don't just print our own money. But anyway, I'll be, I'll be more, not vocal, but I'll be transparent about this process as we get closer to the budget and what, what I think we should do. And does anybody see differently on the numbers that I'm proposing if we, if we do that by 50%? I mean, when you hear that off the cuff and you go, my God, they're increasing their salaries by 50%, but they haven't been changed in so long. And just again, I'm hoping, because I will not benefit from this. I will be off the board. But I'm just hoping that this might encourage a few more people to say, hey, I could do it for that. You know, that that would help defray some costs. Okay. Enough on that. Next item of business, tourism grant dispersment. And the village puts in, I write a, a grant application every year to the county for a tourism grant. And I'd love to say it's my wonderful writing and my persuasive abilities, but as long as you have a pulse and you get it in on time, you're generally going to get this grant in the amount of $4,999. So this year, we were blessed to receive that grant again. We have to show where that money goes, and the board has to agree to the dispersments on it. Last year, we dispersed $2,500 to the Riverfront Committee, a committee that's been around since 1995 and has put together 25-plus years. The only two years they didn't do it was during the height of the pandemic. But bringing 3,000 to 5,000 people to our riverfront every June, which is great for tourism. We gave 15, not gave, we dispersed $1,500 to the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee, which is co-chaired by the gentleman in the back, Michael Trainer and Dominic Cordisco. And they're the ones that provide everything from Movies on the Hudson, the stuff that you see down at the river, to events at the firehouse, like the movies that we put on there, and they do it as volunteers. They receive nothing for it. But all those things cost money. Renting those movies costs money. We have to pay licensing fees. The equipment, the sound, the, the, the blow-up, the blow-up screen, all those things cost money. So last year, we did $1,500 for them. And then we did $1,000 to the Storm King Engine Firehouse, SKE2. They have the Fireman's Fair going on this year. They always help out with any village event, whether it's taking Santa around, to helping string the lights on the tree, to assisting with the children's ball drop last year. They just do all those things. So we did $1,000. What I'm gonna recommend tonight, and I'm gonna give my colleagues a chance to, to make their, to make their cases if they see it differently, I'm gonna recommend that we break it down this year to $1,500 to Riverfront, Riverfest, down from 2,500, 1,500, which is the same amount we gave to the Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee last year, $1,000, which is the same amount that we gave to Storm King Engine Number Two, and $1,000, which is the $1,000 we took from Riverfest, to the Cornwall Youth Committee, which is a relatively nascent committee, and again, a volunteer committee, that does things, their, their goal is to handle the kids that aren't, you know, infants and toddlers, but are like the adolescents that, you know, aren't old enough for the, the high school stuff, but aren't young enough like the, the, the elementary school kids. And it really is an underserved population. And they do a great job, between the kids' ball drop to the color run and all those kind of things. But to do $1,000 for them. So 1,500 Riverfest, 1,500 Cornwall Nuts and Special Events, $1,000 to the firehouse, and $1,000 to Cornwall Youth Committee. And with that, that is my recommendation, but I am but one vote of five. I will turn it over to anyone else that would like to, and I know Trustee Brain has done some work on this and has made an appeal. And if he would like to make the appeal here again and see if he can get someone like me to, yes, I'm certainly.
One, two, three, four. In straw polling, I am given to understand that my proposal is, once again, not necessarily the, the sense of the board. But now, we, we say last year, but we got, I think, I guess, do we get the award in, at this time of year, last year? Because I think we actually dispersed it in January or February of this year.
I think the dates changed a little bit, but I just got notified. I had to have it in two months ago, and I think we were just notified a couple of weeks ago, Doris, that it came in this year. So I, I don't know, because I don't remember when I did it the year before. But I think it was the timing from the county, because I submit it when we get it.
So basically, my proposal is that as opposed to helping those organizations, which absolutely do bring in tourism and create, you know, exciting entertainment for local people as well, is to market the village as a whole using this money as seed money to be, you know, supplemented with an appeal to other tourist-friendly organizations within the town and village. So Storm King Arts Center, Black Rock Forest, the Hudson Island Nature Center, and the businesses, the restaurants here in the village, the coffee shops, et cetera. Go to them and ask them to pony up a little bit of money to put into Akiti so that we have a slightly larger pool to work with. And then simply go to a marketing agency and say, for example, $5,000 grant or $2,000 we were able to raise. For $7,000, can you help us put together a Visit Cornwall on Hudson marketing campaign? So it would be a one-shot campaign. It would be likely digital and social media. So all of those organizations would be able to send out to their email lists. And the, this firm that we might hire would do a social media advertising campaign, put up an ad, serve it up to the population that we think we would like to have come visit. So that might be people from New York City or people from northern Jersey or visitors from other counties around us, just to get people here for our local events and businesses. The, the strat, the objective would be to get more feet on the street, in the village, at the times of all the different events that we put on, so that those people are not just coming and doing a movie on the Hudson or something like that, but they see that we have a year-round set of amenities and events. I recognize that, and this is where the straw polling and discussion that we've had informally in, you know, ones and twos has been going on, is that, you know, it's, it's fairly complex or seen as fairly complex, and the pool of money that we'd be working with, if you go to a marketing agency and say, hey, we have $7,000, you might not get the reach that you're looking for. So I'm presenting both arguments here. And also that these organizations that put on these events are cash-strapped, and they're looking for funding to be able to put on the events that they already put on. So this is a way to help them, and they already have an infrastructure for getting people into the village to these events. So I've, I've given both sides of the argument. I still think that, oh, and the other thing is that as the mayor reminds me, New York Forward also, the grant that we've already received, includes a large tranche for marketing, wayfinding, and branding. And so that would be a very strategically, you know, sourced set of, set of actions that would happen, wouldn't happen as quickly as we might like for something smaller, but. So there's where it is. You know, I think it's doable. I'm open to the, the rest of the board's feelings on it, of course, and, and I will cease with that.
To Trustee Brain's point, the New York Ford Grant, and this will be administered or proctored by the town blessedly. Someone had to take ownership of, of some of the things from New York Ford, the projects that have village and town connections. The Cornwall Connector Trail is a perfect example of that. The Small Project Fund, the $300,000 that we are able to distribute and administer to businesses in the town and the village, up to 10,000, 15,000, 20 or 25, $30,000 increments. And you have to get administrator to do that. That's gonna be managed also by the town. And lastly, to what Bill was talking about, marketing, branding, and wayfinding, which I think is, you put those three words together and that's tourism. So Bill also made the point in helping me out that $4,999 is not a lot of money. I think that getting the businesses involved, that's what the Cornwall Chamber of Commerce is for. That's what the Art Walk is there doing that. And I just think this small dispersment, I, I think goes a lot, a, a lot longer way than to try to get it, I just, complexity and redundancy, those are my two things. It's a well-written thing, and I hope that when it comes to the New York Ford, marketing, branding, wayfinding, they use a template like this. But complexity at this level and with this small amount, and the redundancy of, we're already gonna have that at the macro level with New York Ford, which is why I'm for the other side. And I'll open it up to any of you others who have been mute so far on this point. Not moot, mute.
I, like I said previously, being on the other receiving end also with the youth committee, we need that money, you know? We don't, we don't, we don't have a ton. And we find that bringing new and exciting things to our events is what really brings the people in. And we're not necessarily looking to grab as many bodies as we can. Right now, anyway, I feel like our goal is really to make what we have and who we have, make it the best we can for them, rather than looking outward.
So the distribution of it.
I would appreciate the distribution being your suggestion.
Okay. Sir.
I just think that you've already brought it up with the New York Ford Grant. I think the wayfinding, that whole portion of it kind of usurps us, and there's a lot more money there. So, look, if that doesn't, could that be an add-on after we, after we exercise that money? But there's so much more money there for that purpose. That's why I think it just overshadows this, and I'd rather just give the money to the, what, what we need for these, to keep these committees going, these special events going too.
David.
Yeah, I like Bill's picture, but I think these groups need the money. They, they rely on this dispersment to do the activities they do. As Mary Beth says, they serve the local community, not looking for outside community.
All right. Would the prosecution like redirect now or no?
To Trustee Conrad's point. No, 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 you know, I've, I've made a pitch.
All right. And it's a good one?
I would, to the, to the four people who are tuned in, if any representatives of the Chamber of Commerce or the local business community would like to come in and advocate for anything related to this, and I'm not saying come in and agitate. Make a big argument out of it. But if anybody sees it the way I see it, or differently than any of us see it, I would love to hear that. Just because as a tourism grant, to me, that means bring people here. And so if we're trying to do that, we should try to figure out how to do it. But anyway.
All right. So what you're asking the board to consider right now, Trustee Brain, if I, if I hear this correctly, you're asking me to table this?
No, 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 no. I think, no, if, this has been on the, well, it's been on the published agenda. I mean, as, as many of our issues are, and we're attended tonight. Thank you for coming, the three members, four members of the public that I see before me. We're attended as we usually are. I think, you know, had I, if my feelings were strong enough on this to have tried to ask people to come, or even just asked and said, what do you think of this proposal? We would have a larger crowd here. So no, I don't think, you know, I think we got the grant. The board wants to make a decision. I think the board should make a decision.
Will make a decision, and I will commit to this. I will, I will share this with my colleague uptown, Mr. Wojahowski. And as we go along in the New York Ford process, and as we work on branding, marketing, and wayfinding, I'm going to look at this being incorporated in some way, shape, or form. I think there's some good ideas there that could be pulled out of this and made part of a bigger, bigger, bigger practice.
Well, thank you. But this is a very general and generic thing. They'll be doing this as part of what they offer.
They will, and we will be paying a firm, because you're not gonna do these things on your own. We're not experts in any of those things, but we will pay firm to help us with that. Okay. All right. Then without further ado, I am going to make a motion such that the $4,999 grant award from the Orange County, from Orange County, that was granted to the village of Cornwall and Hudson, be dispersed in the following amounts. For the Riverfest Committee, $1,500. For the Cornwall and Hudson Special, you taking notes in this for me? Cornwall, thank you. Cornwall and Hudson Special Events Committee, $1,500. Storm King Engine Two, $1,000. And pay attention, Lori Beth Paleota, the Cornwall Youth Committee, $999. Because you are the newest committee to be afforded monies, you will lose the $1 since it is a $4,999 grant. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Further discussion beyond what we've already discussed. Should you do a roll call vote, or should I just go all in favor? Do you want to roll?
No, all in favor, I think makes sense.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh, all opposed?
No.
Nay. Nay is the nerve. All right. Okay. All right.
Traditional vote.
All right. Okay, next item of business. Fireworks on private property. So obviously, there are three events in the Village of Cornwall in Hudson, which has been here since eighteen eighty-four, and has been celebrating the Fourth of July via the Independence Day Committee since nineteen fifty, which Dwight David Eisenhower was in office. There have been fireworks on, generally on, on three occasions. We do fireworks the Fourth of July. We do industrial-grade fireworks that are done, are conducted by professionals at the Duck Pond. They usually happen at dusk or shortly thereafter, and they transpire for about thirty minutes. Generally speaking, nine fifteen to nine forty-five or nine to nine thirty. We do them at the fire, the Fireman's Fair, the last night of the Fireman's Fair. Mike, that's on Sunday, correct?
Saturday.
Saturday, I'm sorry. On Saturday night, again, those are industrial-grade fireworks that are inspected and are set off by professionals through approvals through our building inspector, our building department, as well as the school system, since it takes place on the athletic field back behind Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School. And one of the newer things that we've been doing and was received with great fanfare and aplomb was at the ball drop at midnight on, on New Year's Eve into January first. So those usually take place at, you know, twelve oh one AM. And usually, we don't have enough to do thirty-four minutes of it, but a robust fifteen, twenty minutes worth. And we also do, Mike, did we do them for the kids' ball drop? We also did them for the kids' ball drop, which occurred at, what time did we do that? Eight o'clock?
Yes.
Eight o'clock. I get it from the people that live on Hudson Street by the Central Business District, and, you know, you hear the music and you hear all those kind of things, and, and I get it. It's one of those things where we live in a place where we celebrate certain things. You move to the nuisance, you have to expect that there's going to be a parade on the Fourth of July and Memorial Day. You're going to hear marching bands. There's going to be fireworks and these separate things. What has gotten repeatedly more of a nuisance, and I've had complaints from a number of parts of the village, and as someone who had to go home early before the fireworks started, because I have a two-and-a-half-year-old puppy who literally, you know, soils herself in panic and fear. And again, I, I understand the, the ones that we do as a village. What I don't is the ones that go on after that. Now, the Fourth of July this year was on Thursday. They also went on Friday night. They also went on Saturday night. They also went on Sunday night, and the last one I heard at eight-thirty the following Monday night, from different places around the village. Are these kids, you know, who knows? Are these some adults? Yes. I asked the code enforcement officer to pull up what New York State law and what village code said in regards to fireworks displays. And I did this after a resident sent me photos of what, as someone who spent a little time in combat zones, what looked like one oh five shell casings or one fifty-five shell casings, the size of some of these fireworks, the, the base plate, the, the shell casing that ended up in neighbors' yard, yards. That is unacceptable. Now, I know that we've had four, five extremely wet years. But some of us are old enough to remember when huge parts of Storm King Mountain burned, and the fires lasted for, for months and, you know, and months and months before they could be brought under control. So what's to say we have a couple of dry seasons and one of these, you know, illegal fireworks displays, and that's what they are, they're illegal, takes place and sets things on fire? Okay, what's legal and what's not illegal? So I gave to each of the trustees the twenty-twenty fire code for New York State, Chapter Fifty-Six Explosives and Fireworks. And Manny, with your indulgence, I'm going to ask you to give me a thumbnail sketch of that, so I don't have to read each of these about what's allowed and what's not. And then the difference between what a sparkler is. We all know the sparklers that kids hold that fire off, you know, the little, you know, the little, it's not flames, the sparkles, I guess the sparklers sparkle, and the difference. Manny, somebody using what I would consider to be industrial-grade, somebody else may disagree with that. I grew up in Georgia. Fireworks were legal, and people blew their hands off all the time. And it was just part of business of growing up in the deep south in the seventies and eighties. But here, there are laws that say that people can't own them or purchase them, correct? And what are they allowed to have? I mean, the difference between a firecracker like this or a bottle rocket that kids shoot off versus what took place the other night, which I would consider to be commercial-grade or industrial-grade fireworks?
Like you mentioned, the sparkles, or anything that cannot leave the ground, those are the type that they could use in their house.
So bottle rockets?
No.
You know what the bottle rocket is? The stick with the little explosive device on the end that shoots up in the air and whistles and comes down?
To be used in a private property.
They're illegal. Okay. And this is something that we grapple with as a board now, because we're, you know, as New York State especially moves into this de-policing realm, where people get upset about too much, you know, music. But if you pull somebody over for that, and that person pulls a gun or argues that you targeted them because they had long hair or they're from another town, it's putting our police officers in a tough way. And then now, especially around the Fourth of July, but also around New Year's Eve, how do we police this? Do I send Sergeant Ruger and police officers to somebody's home if I can see or tell that they are shooting fireworks from their backyard? And I will throw that out to the board. If the board has any questions for the code enforcement officer regarding what is supposed to be enforced, and then we'll make it a police matter and ask the police chief, and the sergeant unfortunately is here because he drew the short straw, how do we go about enforcing it?
I think the first thing is residents just have to recognize that there's no law that needs to be changed. It's already on the books.
Yeah.
The practical matter is, is enforcement of it. And going down that road, we have one officer on each shift. Now, on July fourth, we do have more, but that's when they have the fireworks displays. So really, what it comes down to is either a neighbor or resident is going to complain and has evidence of it, or the officer sees it. So I think that's really, that's where the practicality meets the law. I mean, I don't know, I don't know, since I've been on the board, I haven't, well, the chief's not here. I can't, I don't, I don't think anyone ever gotten a ticket for it that I, that I remember. But yeah, I mean, it's just like anything else. If we can enforce it, we should. The problem is, is we don't have a large police department to actually do that. I'm not dissuading anyone from the police department doing it. I think we should, they should be encouraged to.
I think that this is valuable in that probably the first step is public awareness.
Education.
You know, essentially, a lot of people know that what they're doing is illegal. Where I grew up, the neighborhood was, you know, middle-class, and it was very large, this is Long Island, very largely, police officers and firefighters, and fireworks were going off continually. And the on-duty police officers would go to the homes of the on-duty police officers and firefighters, who would all run in the house and then come out and say, what? Are, are the kids lighting stuff off out here? And everybody would, you know, kind of shake hands and walk away. And it was policed to an extent to like tone it down when it was necessary to tone it down. I think that the reason it's actually being discussed here now, and I've only been on the board for, for years, and we have not discussed it before, is that it has escalated over time and, you know.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I think you're right.
I, I think during COVID, I believe, was the loudest that I can recall, because people had been cooped up and people wanted to, you know, you know, do something that was a little more audible. And so anyway, so yeah, I think that, just making it clear that it's really not acceptable to be doing illegal displays that go on and on and on, you know?
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, not to interrupt you, but correct me if I'm wrong. You have to go across state lines to buy these, correct? You cannot buy, I've never seen a fireworks stand like.
Sparkling, sparkling, yeah, what is it? It's, I just, I see the memo that you.
Right, but I'm, I'm talking about the ones that you see like on ninety-five and eighty-five, you know, south of the Mason Dixon line, where you just pull off the, you pull off the highway and it's right there. It's a fireworks shot.
Pennsylvania location.
Pennsylvania. Okay, so, so from Port Jervis over to Pennsylvania.
Wait a minute, I know. When you were mentioning your dog, your dog is two. My, I have two dogs that are five and a half, and one runs up to the tub, so it doesn't get any better, it just gets worse. So totally, whatever we can do.
I've never, I've never personally been too bothered by them, but this, this past Fourth of July, I, I saw and heard what was exactly, what I was seeing uptown was down in the village. And I know it wasn't my neighbor, but if it was, I would have been scared for sure. I mean, it's just, it's.
To, 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 to Trustee Brain's point, and again, this is not going to reach everybody, just like this isn't going to reach everybody on YouTube or watching live. But I mean, I obviously can leverage, I can rev, leverage the village website, which again, is going to have a small aperture. I can leverage social media with the mayor's message and put something out and focus just on this. And pull out Manny, maybe Manny, you could help me with that by pulling out the salient parts of this, because what, what the code, what did I do with it? What the code enforcement officer provided me is about a page, and then a second page in the Sparkle piece, and maybe we pull out the important stuff, don't get bogged down in the weeds. But these are illegal, and these are not allowed to be. No one's going to come to your house and knock on the door in the middle of the night and try to take away your fireworks. However, if you discharge them from your property, then what does the threat become? And I hate to levy that, because that would be the threat. We tell people, if they don't mow their lawn, we're going to violate them. Well, then we tell them, if you, if you let off what we consider to be, you know, commercial-grade fireworks that are disallowed in New York State, we will enforce the law. And maybe we try it in this route, and we say, please, share this with your friends and neighbors. We all know somebody who does this. And remember, your rights end where mine begin. My rights end where yours begin. That's the old saying. However, everybody doesn't live like that, and that's the problem. But we start with a messaging and an education push. But then I go, what? Do we wait until January first to see if it made any difference? Do we have to wait till next July fourth to see if it made any difference? Mike?
Um, just to point out, with the new billing system, you can send out flyers with important information to all your users in the village.
There you go.
Because it's going in with a, with an envelope now.
Can you get with me on that, Mike? Because I'll take a day or so, I'll get with Manny, I'll draft something up, share it with the board. I'll put it out on social media, on the village website, the village Facebook page, and then, can you get with me?
And, and, and as the chief pointed out, you can also use Code RED, the telephone messaging system.
I hate to do that for something that's not an emergency.
No, but you can do text messaging and emails. We have that capability through the billing system as well.
Let's talk about that. I like the idea in a bill, because everybody gets that. So. Okay. All right. Anything else we need to, anything to add on that?
Just the timing, like, you don't have to do, you don't have to beat the drum at, right after July fourth. You just do it in the lead up to New Year's Eve.
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a great point, too. Okay.
All right. I think I'd like to put something out at least first, just to get people to talk about it. And then maybe just a reminder, kind of like a, you know, one-liner kind of thing as we get closer to, to those events. Because we've got, you know, New Year's Eve, and that's the second worst. July fourth is the worst, New Year's Eve is the second worst. Okay, that's that. Next thing, parking on Churchill Street. So in two thousand and twenty-one, this was right around October, November timeframe, because we passed a law, which was local law number six of two thousand and twenty-one. So it would have been my first term as mayor. Because, and this is what happens, somebody wants something, but everything has a ripple effect or a cascading effect, where if you do one thing, it then impacts everybody else. And we, we labored over this. And I knew there were some people that were opposed to it when we passed this law. There were a number of people that were, that were in favor of this. But it's essentially a no-parking zone from the stop sign on Churchill Street, where Churchill, where Churchill is a one-way road that runs towards the river and then runs into a perpendicular road to it, Spruce Street. So from that intersection, back up Churchill Street, two hundred feet, but because there was a rather large driveway at the two-hundred-foot line, we had to go beyond that driveway, which now extended it beyond the two hundred feet. I understood the reason why we did it. There was an argument that, and I've seen the pictures, and I've seen during the bigger storms, when we plowed those streets, and there's a car parked on the street and someone is trying to get out of their driveway. Those people that live on river, but their driveway is on Churchill and have to try to get out and couldn't do it because cars were parked there, I get it. But there are also people there that say, I've now got nowhere to park. And if I have a visitor from my family that comes up from Long Island or comes down from, from New Paltz, there's no place for him to park. And I know the answer becomes, well, then you've got to park in the municipal lot off of the Maple Avenue Extension, and you've got to walk over. And does that work for Mrs. McGillicuddy, who might be ninety-four years old with two Arthritic hips? So my question is, is this something we should revisit? I remember when this law was proposed, and supervisor, the superintendent of DPDW said, I don't know if this is a good idea to do this, but there were a number of people that showed up and petitioned the board to do it. Is it something that we should revisit? I know that we are, I don't want to say lax, but I know that our police officers use judgment and discernment in writing tickets there, understanding that there's limited parking, and somebody comes to visit, and they park there, and it specifically states no parking, because the village passed that law. But we're in a conundrum now, because there are people there that are impacted the other way, that are not happy with the impact of the law. So I will open it up to the board for comment.
Well, wasn't there an issue with fire trucks being able to fit down the road?
It is a very narrow street. There's no doubt about that. I don't remember specifically, Dave, if that was an item that we discussed. I think it was more so related. I remember somebody coming in and showing a picture when, this is probably one of the storms seven or eight years ago, where the snow was piled up four feet or five feet high. And when you had a car parked there, there was literally no way to get out of a driveway. And there were people that were concerned about it, and it's along that length, say, from the Garrison's house all the way to the corner that runs into Spruce.
I had thought at the time that it was just for the couple of driveways closest to Idlewild.
But you can't.
You have to do two hundred feet.
You can't do it. You can't, you can't go, you can't put like four different no-parking zones on there. You have to establish what that no-parking zone is. And Dave, what is the reason that it was two hundred feet from the corner?
We left parking right off of Idlewild Avenue on the corner by, was Tressel.
Yes, where PJ Clark's house is.
Yes.
There's a couple of parking spaces.
But I'm saying, why did we, I, I thought that there was a reason or requirement why it had to be two hundred feet from the stop sign.
The way it worked out were driveways. That's, that's why we went with this number.
So it was supposed to be no parking. I, I'd have to go back and look at it again.
Yeah.
And this was like, I think this was like, was this like May of, of twenty twenty-one that we did? I think it was my fir, one of my first meetings. In any case, I'd have to understand again, the, our rationale at the time was basically, as you said, people wanted to pull out of their driveways, the roads were narrow.
It required a public hearing.
They'd pull out, and there was a car right behind them. They couldn't get their car out of their own driveway because there was a car parked on this narrow road right behind their driveway. So the request was for those driveways that would be affected by that kind of issue, which was not every driveway on the street, like there, the houses are different sizes, and the driveways are different configurations as you go closer to Spruce. So I thought that sort of the half closest to Idlewild was going to be the one where there was no parking.
Yeah, and, and I think the issue for the people that have parking, that have, that have driveways, that, that their home faces river, and then they have driveways on Churchill, their driveways are small, and some of those people, they can only put one car in there. And so if they can't put a second car on the street, and, and again, I remember having this conversation back then, but my mind is so foggy, I can't remember what I had for breakfast this morning. Wasn't there discussion about, and I forget, it was swatted down, because I don't know if it was the enforcement piece, but about allowing residents of that street to be allowed to park there, but restricting it for others? And was it because you just can't do that? Municipal law doesn't allow you to? And was it because you just can't do that, municipal law doesn't allow you to? Do you remember that conversation? You weren't here, but the other four of us were here and I just can't remember.
I know this gentleman is biting at the, oh, and you obviously live on Churchill.
I'm not going to make you wait until public comment, sir. You absolutely can state, I know who you are, but state your name and your address for the record. And then I want to, you and I have spoken about this in the past.
I remember meeting you, thank you, Mayor. Um, my name is Dominic Manassi, I work, I work, I live at ten Churchill Street and.
Describe your house and the layout of driveway versus.
When you make the right on the Churchill.
When you make the right, when you make the right on the Churchill and you're going down Churchill, we're the.
Second house on the left.
On the right.
On the right.
Okay, so you got the garr-, so you got the garrisons as you're going down the block. Here's me, have the garrisons over here on the left-hand side. Right there, nice big driveway with two cars. You go right, just a little bit further, you have, uh, Missy's, um, driveway, which holds several cars, it's a little bit bigger. Then right next to her is our driveway, it's only one car driveway, okay? And so what was, what was the, what I, we thought was the communication after we spoke to you was, we just wanted a stop, a, a place of no parking between the garrisons beginning to ours. So that we can be able to pull out, because what was happening is, especially because of the new, uh, the, the new, um, uh, restaurant, there was so much parking and of course for Tuesday's, uh, you know, celeb-, uh, entertainment, they just, they don't even look at those parking signs. So they just, they just park. And what's happened is on several occasions, we've had to pull out, be very careful not to hit somebody as we're trying to get out, to go, to get, you know, to, to drive. And so what the initial conversation was after, I believe, speaking with you, was we just wanted that section. So we thought that was clear and we thought that we were good. I wake up one morning and there are the, the construction guys and they got a pole there by the garrisons, another pole right by mine, and then another pole at the end of all no parking. So I'm like, wait a minute, that's not what we agreed on, so now we can't park anywhere except on our own driveway. And we have, and the garrisons have two cars that can park, uh, Missy, her people, they have four cars, they have enough to park. We only have one, uh, but we have several other cars that my kids use, so we need more parking area. So it just became more of a problem. And just even recently, I've seen arguments in my community over this situation. I'm like, okay, this has got to stop.
Being, um, somebody on the block being upset that somebody's parked there.
Yeah.
Where it says no parking.
Right.
Now, is the person that is parking there in the no parking, are they residents of Churchill or are these outsiders?
It was residents, it was a residence of Churchill. So it's just, it's, I can't, I can't change the way they're dealing with each other, that I can't change. But what I'm hoping we can do is come up with some kind of agreement where we can, I know it's in law, but there's a way we can change the parking, the no, the no parking requirement so that at least, not the whole half of the block, just, just that quarter.
And, and I appreciate your patience and I know this has been frustrating. I remember talking to you.
Yeah.
I remember Dave being there and us talking to you. And Dave, help me, because I don't remember, there was a reason why it had to start at the, cause I remember you coming out and saying, I just need this. And for us to make the law, it had to be a certain stretch.
I don't recall the exact, what was going on, but there was problems down at the end as well as.
Okay, so was somebody else on the other?
Yes, okay.
Okay, well.
Other than lining it and, you know, here's one parking spot, here's another parking spot.
The only other suggestion I would suggest, that's why I sent an email to, um, to Doris is, is there maybe we come up some kind of, um, some kind of a parking permit for the people who live on the block.
I know that I explored that and the problem with doing that is, if you do it for Churchill Street, you'll have to do it for every other street. Let, let me do this, let me do this. Let me go there with Dave again and walk that, all right? I'll come see you and, and let's talk about it. I, I was, I was pretty sure that why we settled on that, cause that is a great distance and it takes up two-thirds of the block or a big ju-, it goes past Bellas.
It does.
Let us take a look at it. I don't know if this is something, Joe, that we could do via board amendment? Or would this have to be another law if we were to restructure this and have to go through New York State again to do this?
Well, we don't have to go through the state. If we made a no parking law, we'd have.
We would have to have another public hearing.
Sure.
And then we'd have to pass the law here to change, to change what's no parking and what's parking.
Seems like the real problem is getting it right, the law is just secondary.
Yes.
Figuring out the solution.
But you can't amend it without going through the hearing process. You'd have to do the whole thing.
Well, Mayor, I, I appreciate you guys just taking the time to take a look at it, I really do appreciate it, thank you so much.
Are you around the next couple of weeks?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Let me reach out to you, Doris has got your contact information.
You have my email, I don't think you have my phone number.
Just email, email, email your, your phone number and I'll call you and come see you. All right, sorry you guys had to sit around for the rest of that. I thought you were going to say amusing.
You're being very gracious.
All right, folks, thank you.
It's, it's a tough situation because especially if they have like, you know, your sister's there, you know, they have kids come over, whatever, and where do they park? There's no parking there.
Right, 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 absolutely. Okay, let's move on to the next thing, cause we are already two hours into this. Um, okay, next order of business is, um, Bill, let's try to keep this one, we'll try to keep the rest of this quick since we don't have much left. Um, and really what we need to debate is how many stations we want.
Are we debating that tonight?
Um, I, I, is it something? No, yeah, like where, how many?
We all agree.
We all agreed?
Two, two stations, one in municipal lot and one at the waterfront.
Oh, okay.
I'll get quote, I still need quotes for.
Okay, got it.
I've got a revised quote out.
All right, so, let me, let me, let me preface this. So, um, the town just recently conducted a ribbon cutting, which made me very jealous that they beat us to something. Um, for two EV charging stations, each of the charging stations has two hookups on it, so it's actually four opportunities to charge at Town Hall in the municipal lot there. Um, Bill has been working on this for us, um, and the board has looked at three potential locations. I think the sticking point is going to be figuring out which ones are the most important and which ones we should focus on, cause there's a cost attached to this, um, and I'll turn it over to Bill.
Uh, so I've, I've been soliciting quotes, uh, for, for, well, there was some misguided stuff, uh, where there's an ICERTA grant that if you have a certain number of plugs, you can get additional funding. And one of the vendors had said, oh, you qualify for those, but the other one said we didn't, so I corrected that and we don't. And so basically what we're looking at is this municipal lot right next to the village hall, the municipal lot by the bandstand and the waterfront to put a single charger at, uh, one or more of those locations. And just, um, you know, we're, the municipal lot and the waterfront seem like the most promising ones. Uh, I've done a little mock-up here, we are waiting for a revised quote from the second vendor and, um, and potentially a third one that just called me back today after weeks and weeks of silence. Uh, so we're, the, and the quotes don't have any, there's no real major premium to putting, uh, we're not going to put two spot, two chargers. I think that's the sense of the board based on a one and twosy conversations that we've been having. Um, we'll put one at each location, these will be pilot projects, they'll be near a, an electrical supply that could be expanded in the future if we needed it. But, um, uh, two locations, one stanchion at each, which would mean two spots at each. And we can just get the quotes for those and, and then if, if we all agree that that's what we want quotes for, we can get it. And then we can vote on a vendor and, uh, going forward in August, if that's desirable to the rest of the board.
I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Two, waterfront, municipal lot. We're good?
Now, when you say, um, municipal lot, we're referring to the one off the Maple Avenue Extension.
Close to COH Elementary.
Close to COH Elementary School, behind the bandstand and right in our central business district and the other one down at, um.
On the south end of the waterfront, close to where kayakers embark who have come to visit the town. And just the, the objective of having these site, these EVs.
I said the village, you said town.
Oh, jeez. When I say people come to town.
All right.
Uh, the, the rationale for having these chargers is these aren't necessarily, um, these aren't something that somebody's going to plug into overnight and charge as a replacement for their residential charging that they have. But it's for people who are maybe, uh, temporarily disadvantaged and don't have, uh, a place to charge, who are local folks who want to go and top off, or people who have traveled to Cornwall of Hudson, um, or who are en route somewhere else and want to stop someplace pleasant, have lunch, charge their car to top off and then move on. So it's, you know, related to the tourism discussion we had, it's a way to get more people, when they're planning their trip, if they see that there is a charging station, it's definitely, it makes it a no-brainer as far as the destination goes. Um, and it was funny while I was writing up a little memo on this for the board, I was traveling, I went up to the Adirondacks and I went to Princeton, I have an electric car and we ended up using it exactly as we're proposing here. We were in an area for a period of hours and had, you know, used up some of our charge and wanted to make sure we had enough for our onward journey. So we just plug in, do what, you know, we shopped at outlets in, uh, Lake George and, you know, and then drove back to the, to the cabin. So, um, that's the purpose of it. Two, we'll get quotes, we'll come back with at least two vendors, maybe three, uh, to decide upon in August and then authorize the mayor to, um, go forward with one of them.
Awesome.
Good.
Bill, I appreciate it, I'm excited, yep. So appreciate it, we're moving into the twenty-first century.
And those will be revenue generating stations for the village as well.
Ab-, absolutely, perfect. Um, all right, um, what did we decide on the donation for the, to the Fourth of July, we were putting that on in, in August, was that the plan? Is that what we decided? Yes, okay. Last thing, and I'm just going to throw this out for food for thought. Um, I particularly, and I know the village is much different than the town, but I had an accidental bump in in dinner with the supervisor for the town of New Windsor, who was a former Cornwall cop and a good friend of mine, Steve Bedetti. His wife and family were down at the Jersey Shore, where my wife and family were, different parts of the shore. And we just both happened to be at the same restaurant at the same time, so we had dinner together, two geographical bachelors. And we were going through our day and what we did and what we were focusing on and just kind of doing shop talk. Um, and this was something I found interesting, I never, ever, ever attend planning board meetings, zoning board of appeals meetings, nor ethics committee meetings. I always feel like it's inappropriate, if there's something that needs to come to this board, it gets brought to my attention, I address it with the board, we speak to council, we speak to the building inspector. I always feel like being at those meetings gives the impression that you're either for something or against something and you shouldn't do it. Um, and then in talking to Supervisor Bedetti, I understand that, that New Windsor is not Village of Cornwall and Hudson. We have two square miles by two square miles, three thousand people. The town of New Windsor is twenty-nine thousand people and they have forty-two square miles and a much bigger, broader industrial base. He has an infrastructure meeting with the building inspector, with the planning board chair, the zoning board of appeals chair and the town attorney. Granted, their town of attorney is an employee and works at Town Hall once every month and it's called an infrastructure meeting. Now, I understand we don't have the kind of development that they do in New Windsor, so is that something that the board, the mayor should be engaged in? Is that something other municipalities do? And again, I understand we're a small microcosm of what they have there, but I thought that that was interesting and they called an infrastructure meeting and they talk about what's on tap for the planning board, what's on tap for the zoning board of appeals? Are we are in alignment on these things and what the boards, meaning the New Windsor boards, goals and missions are as far as the shape of the town?
Well, go ahead, Joe, you work for them, so.
In my experience, uh, there's no, uh, I, I don't have another client I have that has a formal type infrastructure meeting. Although, you know, I have represented Wallkill, uh, Wallkill has a large, you know, the, the two eleven interchange. So there's alw-, so there's always traffic issues, enforcement issues, um, lights being added, parking being added. So there were some discussions about establishing a transportation district and, and things like that. And of course, New Windsor, probably the town of Newburgh, with all the ongoing development all the time, it's probably just a necessity, um, we don't have that type of development here. Although I'm a big proponent of having all the boards understand what's pending, you know, just so you know what's going on before the planning board, not that you necessarily need to go, but you may go just for informational purposes, not because you're going to weigh in for or against, it's just so you understand what's going on. But the, this village is very different, uh, the, the scale of the development is, is, is so small as to, to make those, those kinds of formal meetings, I think, unnecessary. If we ever have a project that that's large here in the village, um, I think everyone's going to know about it, you may, probably will show up at a meeting and, and this board may have to weigh in.
You see that with Treetop or, you know, Beagini, you see that there. But I'm thinking about it from the perspective of, you know, uh, I know I've read the comprehensive plan, you know, we didn't have one for sixty years. We had a committee that spent a number of years doing it and, and Mayor Coin's board got it across the finish line, it got voted on and approved. But how does that impact the planning board and the zoning board of appeals? Yeah, they're all familiar with it, but is that not a meeting that should happen where we make sure that we are adhering to or at least hewing towards what the stated goals in that comp plan is? Otherwise, it's just a paperweight.
Yeah, the, the way I would think of it is, in the context of your New York Forward grant, you have certain projects. I can see meeting with the ZBA and the planning board and the building inspector, because when those funds start coming in and those projects have to be developed. I, I, I actually do happen to represent Village of Montgomery. They did get, uh, a New York Forward grant, just as this village did. And last week I had a meeting with the building inspector, the planning board chair and, and the village engineer, because we know that there are going to be some big projects coming down the pipeline and we wanted to start now to address that. So that's something that I can see in the context of the New York Forward, but the applications that we get before the plant, planning board, uh, it, it wouldn't be necessary.
Yes, sir.
On my understanding of the relationship between those boards and the comp plan is that, is that if we do anything with zoning, so the zoning is established as it is and it's, you know, coded and so on, and the planning board and the zoning board of appeals are bound by the, by code. If we change the zoning, it has to be derived from the comprehensive plan. That the comprehensive plan is the blueprint that we are following, the village board.
The guide.
It's a guide.
The guide, fair enough, right, we have discretion, of course, but it is a vision document, uh, with some specifics in it, which is supposed to guide our revisions, if any, to the zoning, uh, so that it's in, in line with it. And then they execute on that in their, in their meeting, so.
All right, I just threw that out.
No, I think it's more about the scale, so, just to give you a reference, their meetings have been televised for more than ten years. New Windsor, New Windsor planning board meetings have been televised for a long time.
When you say televised, you mean?
No, on your regular channel, you could go to like channel thirteen, I used to watch them all the time.
Like public access?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and they had, at those meetings, they had, they were represented by their engineers at everyone. Not only their lawyer, but also the engineering group, because it was McGooey, Hauser and Etzel.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it, I didn't mean to drag this on longer, but I thought that was interesting and I wanted to get a sense of it. I think that, Joe, I think you answered that well, thank you. All right, um, as far as anything else, free information, July seventeenth, Michael, which is Wednesday, to July twentieth, um, will be the Fireman's Fair. This is the annual fundraiser for our volunteer fire department. I would encourage each and everybody to at least stop down there. I will be down there every night, especially since I'm a geographical bachelor, so I'll have nothing to do. Uh, I don't think they're doing a dunking booth this year, I think I got away with it the last two years. Yeah, I know, I know.
I know.
Um, so, all right, so Mike, that's Wednesday to Saturday, and when does it open on Wednesday?
It opens at six PM each night, except for, um, Saturday opens at four PM. There's an early bird special for the camps and, and younger children on Thursday from nine to twelve, rain date is Friday. And as the chief pointed out to me earlier, we too are taking part in the, the Upstate Art Weekend, we will have face painting at the fair.
All right.
Outstanding, all right, and what time does it end each night, Mike, in case you get that question?
Wednesday and Thursday is ten o'clock.
Okay.
Friday, Saturday, we generally say eleven o'clock, but it appears at a little bit before that.
And the, the fireworks on the, on the.
Scheduled for ten PM usually on Saturday.
Ten PM on Saturday.
Yep.
Okay. All right, obviously Manny, you're involved in making sure that we're safe down there and everything's in compliance. Okay, August eighth, seven PM zoning board meeting in the village boardroom, right here. August 8th, 7:00 PM zoning board meeting in the village boardroom, right here. August 13th, 7:00 PM fire commission meeting in the village boardroom, right here. August 19th, our next combined work session and business meeting for August, our last combined one. Um, 7:00 PM in this room here. Alright, I think the next thing, actually the last thing, is public comment, correct?
Yes.
Public comment. Anybody from the pu, Mr. Joya, please step up to the podium, state your name for the record and your address, and then have at it, sir.
Hi, Rick Joya, 167 Hudson. So I took some notes. Okay, um, I just had a question. The, the deer collision, uh, now, I, I, I forget how it works with municipal car insurance vehicles. I mean, if it was my car, that would be a comprehensive claim, not a collision claim, right? And it wouldn't affect, uh, my premium.
I don't know.
So, is it different for a municipal vehicle? And I just, I'm wondering. It's like a lot of money, and a comprehensive claim, to my mind, usually is, and a, and a deer hit is a comprehensive claim. It's, it's not, it's a, it's not a collision claim, it has a separate category, and the payout is different from a, from an insurance.
I will check with the chief when he comes back in. Rick, I don't know that, so I, I'll need to be.
I would have to check that.
And Doris said she will look into it as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, another issue wasn't discussed tonight, but, uh, Route 218. Uh, presumably is going to be reopened, uh, in the foreseeable future.
Close.
This year, perhaps? I don't know. Are they saying?
I saw the pictures.
I've been hearing by fall.
I saw the pictures the other day. My son worked out there, and, and it is close, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure what their plan are, and once it's, it's repaired. I don't know how soon they're gonna actually open it up to traffic.
So, the coming.
And goings.
Yes.
Mostly the comings.
So, we've been blessed with, uh, peace and quiet, uh, but that is coming to an end. And I hope we maybe learned something from not just me, but several village residents. That complained about speed, noise, et cetera, et cetera, all the things that were not being enforced. Um, and I hope the police department has had time to reflect on maybe a, a strategy. For, maybe things are gonna be different when that road does reopen. Uh, but I hope that thought is being given, because it's gonna come back as much, if not more. Given the way everything is just steroided out every year. It's more, 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 fireworks, more, more. It's like, you know, pick your subject, right? We just, we, it's just how high is the sky?
I absolutely make a point to speak with the chief about that.
I think that conversation is coming, and irate village residents are coming too, on, on the heels of that, so. Fair warning, right? Um, a minor thing, but Upstate Art Weekend, uh. Organizations that participate in Upstate Art Weekend, uh, apply for that, and they pay to be a part of Upstate Art Weekend. So, it's just a little bit disingenuous to kinda draft on that when we're not really part of Upstate Art Weekend.
I, I don't, I don't understand your point.
I mean.
You say draft on it, they put us down as a stop.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We're a stop on it.
Is that true?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so then I stand corrected, so I, I wasn't sure on that, because I know organizations.
Yeah.
Apply, and have we applied?
This is, not us, this is the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, so the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes.
No, well, but the Chamber of Commerce is not putting it on, it's a, it's.
They're not putting it on, but they have made us part of it. When they came to the village and the town and asked about Vivian Collins sculptures.
Okay.
And we said, well, why? And they said, this is what our goal is. Our goal is to get people to come to this as.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm certainly not arguing against that. It was, like I said, it's a very minor kinda nuance-y thing.
Creator Cornwall Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, so they're, they're the, they're the sponsors. I just, thank you. So that's the clarification, okay. Um, uh, bum, bum, bum. Okay, and then. I'm probably gonna regret this, but, um, I need to rebut your opening statement. Just one aspect of your opening statement, um, because I think it did go into the natural, national scene. Which we tend to keep things separate here, and, uh, and I think it did editorialize a little. And so I feel like it does, um, require a rebuttal. I mean, we were talking about the tree law, and you yourself said. Uh, we don't want the neighbors thinking that Gestapo is coming.
Yes.
Okay, so, right, we're all afraid.
Use of reckless language on my part is what you're suggesting.
Well, it's language, and, and, and language is language, and, and, uh. You know, you mentioned that there are no communists and there are no fascists, and.
Yes.
I have not read or, or heard any overt communist doctrine being espoused. Uh, in this current race.
Marxist, I'm sorry, or socialist. I could have said that too, I just.
Those are different things.
Examples of the extremes, that's all I was doing.
But I would say, but I would say, on the other side, uh, there are no fascists. I would have to rebut that and say that, uh, Project 2025, which, uh, one of the candidates is behind 1,000%. Based on, uh, anyway, we're talking about, uh, uh, the ramifications of that is taking away reproductive freedom. Nationwide, uh, uh, using, uh, presidential's power for revenge.
I'm, I'm confused right now. What does this have to do, my, the only reason I said that was that we should keep these people in our prayers. We should tone down the rhetoric, and we're blessed that the things that are being said and the names that are being called are not representative of how we do debates here. And now you're going into Project 2025, which I didn't touch or talk about, and I'm happy to debate you at two ounces over coffee on that. But this isn't the place for that.
I, well, I, I agree, there is a firewall. There is a firewall, and I, I respect the firewall at, at a, at a village meeting.
What your argument is, is that.
That maybe you violated.
I violated it because I said that some people refer to certain ends of the, of the, of the partisan politics. As one thing, and some people refer to the other end as this, and we need to collaborate, and we need to be better, and it's.
I just think we need to be more careful about.
Okay, but I, but I, but, but, but I, there was no, there was no side here. The whole point about this was. That this should be a collective reckoning, and that we should be careful.
For sure.
Like the president said, and as I pointed out, like part of the platform this week in Milwaukee is gonna be. But I'm happy to debate that stuff, Rick, with you, you know that.
Appreciate that. I just felt like I needed to say something, and there I said it, okay.
Alright.
Thank you all. Thank you for your work, thank you.
Take care. Alright, any, well, there are no, nobody else from the public. Okay, um, trustees, let me go around the table. Um, trustee Paleola.
Um, question, can we still pre-purchase tickets for the fair?
Uh-oh.
If maybe one of us maybe forgot.
Back to you. Chief, I think you dropped your phone. Yeah.
Okay, no, just wondering.
You need tickets.
Yes, you can prepaid for them.
Well, you can't, yeah.
You get like an advance.
I didn't know if it was still open or not.
Do you need a wristlet? I mean, what do you need?
Now, she wants one of those ones around the neck, the glow ones, around the neck.
Jim, not nice. Um, and I. That's it.
Alright, um, trustee Brain.
Big meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody, for all the discussion. Water superintendent for his engineering project update. Uh, that's, uh, you know, it's a nice, like, crisp, clear thing I could look at. And get a sense of a lot of the work that you all are doing, and that's terrific, not to take away from anything that any other department is doing. You guys are all doing a lot of great work. Um, in particular, I had a bunch of storm damage, and, uh. Um, a family member was kind enough to pile all of our debris on the side of the road in a sort of disorganized fashion, not, I'm not condoning this. And, uh, the DPW picked it up without any concern or complaint, so thank you, et cetera. So, thanks, everybody, for your hard work, and I appreciate this list.
David.
Uh, just on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee, uh, thanks to, um, our people. For, uh, not only supplying a truck and a driver, and, uh, helped us, uh, carry our last float. So, uh, we really needed it, and I appreciate it. And, uh, of course, the fire company, uh, for helping us. All, uh, with the duck derby and all they did, and for being in the parade, so.
Outstanding, appreciate it. Deputy Mayor.
I second what Dave said, and that's it, thank you.
Yeah, but I'm gonna do the same thing and, um, say, I'm gonna make a motion to close the July 15th. Combined work session and business meeting of the village board. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, keep in mind that the mics are still on, so please keep, until Doris gives me the okay that we've shut down.
Thanks, all.
Bill, thank you, appreciate it.
Dave, thank you. Lori Beth, thank you. And thank you for taking that on, that's gonna be an important one. I don't think it's gonna be a lot of work, it's just, man, I need somebody to be the point person on that. Oh, thank you, thank you, really.